Recall this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for September 27, 2022. Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Felkha.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reply to the actions of the day. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion carried. Public comments? Anyone from the public like to get up and speak on anything other than what's on the agenda? Anyone online? Seeing none, moving on to claims and payments. Mr. Veder?
The total for the week's claims and payments is $398,082.31. Significant expenditures include $60,629.92 for the engineer for seal coating project and $66,858.63 by IT for Tyler Technologies' maintenance contract.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felkha.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a presentation for Jump In, a community project by Tracy Malaro and Lorelei Redfern. Name an address to start your conversation, young lady.
Oh, hi. I'm Tracy Malaro. My address is 1007 Carriage Lane in Cedar Falls, Iowa. I will get my presentation up here. Okay. Again, I'm Tracy. I'm here to speak to you today, and I'm with Lorelei Redfern, who is my colleague, and we're here to tell you about a transformational quality-of-life project here in the area. It's also part of an important collaboration in the Cedar Valley, and it's for a new auditorium. And an auditorium is just a fancy word of saying indoor pool, and we really hope that you will become part of this. Here's points we're going to address. The first one, we're going to talk about why we need a new indoor pool. Here's our pool scape here in Blackhawk County. We have a terrible pool situation in Blackhawk County. We're a negative outlier. We're below average for a community of our size and stature. So let's go through the four main pools we have open to the public. It's the first four, so we have Central Pool, which is in the best shape. Then we have Homes Pool, Pete Pool, and YMCA Pool. These pools are used very heavily. They're open from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. seven days a week. They're bursting at the seams. More programs want to get in there than they can accommodate. These pools, in addition to all of them that are highlighted in yellow, are at least 45 years old or older, so they're outdated, they break down frequently, they have poor air quality, they're dank, dreary, undesirable places to go. The Pete Pool is going to be closing in the next one to two years, and the Homes Pool has extensive subterranean issues. What we want to avoid here is a situation where one of these pools collapses into the ground and is unreparable, which sounds kind of crazy, but that actually happened in Dubuque three years ago, and we don't want that to happen here. That would just be devastating. It's clear based on the last census that the Cedar Valley is not growing. In fact, from 2010 to 2021, population declined in Blackhawk County by .6%. And during that same time period, population actually increased in the greater Cedar Valley, Ames, Dubuque, Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, Quad City, and the Sioux Land. Right now, we're unfortunately trending with kind of the dying rural, as opposed to the growing areas of the state. We are not competitive in attracting and retaining families, and so in order to attract and retain, we need some quality-of-life amenities such as this indoor pool. Interestingly, I noted your 2028 vision statement up there, and your top two there say, "Build desirable communities," and the second one says, "Promote economic vitality," and this project happens to align perfectly with your 2028 objectives and your vision. Swimming is one of the most popular family and kid recreational activities. Water recreation is important in Blackhawk County. We have many rivers here. We have many creeks. We're home to Lost Island Water Park. We have George With. We have many outdoor pools in the community. In fact, we're building a new one in Waterloo here in the next couple of years. So because of all these bodies of water, water safety is very important. Every kid needs an opportunity to learn to swim, and drowning is the leading cause of death here in Iowa, according to the Iowa Department of Health. Also, there's this lifeguard crisis. We're in the midst of it in our country. It's affecting Iowa. It's affecting our community. Lost Island Water Park had reduced hours last year, and this year, the Falls Aquatic Center, they closed three weeks early. There's also been many other disruptions, closures, and reduced hours over the past few years. You might ask, how does, you know, a pool affect this? Well, 80% to 90% of all lifeguards come from competitive swim programs, and if we don't have pools and adequate pool facilities, we can't have these swim programs, and therefore, we won't have the adequate lifeguards and swim instructors to help keep our families and kids safe. Here's a list of all the newer pools that we have in other communities, and as you look down the list, you'll see that most of these newer pools are in these areas that have experienced the growth in population, so they are investing in their quality-of-life amenities. So we see Lynn Mar, we see Dubuque, Ames, Des Moines, Waki, Cedar Rapids. Those are ones I all mentioned. We even see Mason City there. They're building a new pool. They are actually in a slight population decline, similar to us, but yet they are investing in their aquatic facilities. This facility will be used as a regional asset. It's going to be not just used by Cedar Falls or Waterloo. It's going to be the seven county contiguous area. Basically, those counties outside of us, they're kind of like a indoor pool desert. They don't have the facilities there. They come here to use our indoor pools, and that's going to continue. We need to keep our area competitive with our peers. We need to grow, not shrink. We need to help combat the brain drain we are experiencing here in our community and in Iowa, and this project will also bring in 3,000 visitors a year, which translates into about $1.2 million of revenue into the community, which, over the life of the project, this asset will be here for 50 years, so if you take the 50 years times the 1.2 per year, it's going to have a $60 million impact overall, over the life of the facility. All right, now I'm going to hand it over to Lorelei to go over the elements of the pool design.
Good morning. I'm Lorelei Redfern, 4119 Wynwood Drive, Cedar Falls, Iowa. I'm going to give you a little information about pool design, the cost of the pool, collaborative efforts that have been undertaken in this project, and also the timing of the project. Some of the things I want to point out for you in terms of pool design are very specifically public use features. This pool is going to be located at the campus of the Cedar Falls High School, but it is specifically designed in order to be open to the public on a year-round and day-long basis. The pool, or the facility, has two pools within one building. We have a 10-lane, 25-yard-by-10-lane, 25-meter competition pool, and a smaller, four-lane, 25-yard warm-water pool that's going to have an independent temperature control, and this will be very helpful for older people's joints, for younger kids who are learning to swim, and for therapeutic purposes. There's seating for approximately 500 spectators, and in addition to men's and women's locker rooms, we have a family locker room that is tucked underneath the seating area. Make sure my slides correlate here. Excuse me. One of the things that I've pointed out, of course, is the public use aspect, and down in the lower right-hand corner of this picture, you can see the main entrance to the pool facility. This is a dedicated public entrance. It's separate from the school entrance, so that this facility can be used on a standalone basis. You can't see it in this picture, but directly in front of the entrance is a dedicated parking area, so that the public will park in an area separate from the school and the students, and it has a pickup and drop-off circle to accommodate larger groups of people coming through. You can also see in this picture kind of the overall roof line. We do know that CFU is working on developing plans to install solar panels throughout this particular campus, and also considering the pool for an area to do that. Here you can see an interior view, artist's rendering, that shows the seating, the competition pool, and the smaller warm-water pool in the background. Tracy already covered some of the things that this pool will add to our region in terms of capability, and this slide will list for you the types of programs that can be hosted at this particular pool. One of the things that's important for you to know, and the reason I mentioned the 10 lanes, is that this capacity will allow us to draw larger and championship meets. Right now, eight lanes are required for those types of meets, and so we don't have the capacity at all in this area to host the types of swim meets that bring visitors to the area we would like to attract, let alone the residents. Another important feature of this pool is that we do have true handicap access to the pool. The smaller warm-water pool that I mentioned is going to have a zero-depth ramp, so that people can wade into the pool, or a wheelchair can be rolled into the pool, and of course, in terms of the entrance, we have elevator access to the various floors and easy wheelchair access onto the pool deck, as well as other areas. The real star feature of this pool, though, is that separate entrance. We've calculated that by being open to the public during the day, which we don't have the ability to do now, we're going to add almost 70 hours per week of additional programming time, and our programming drafts and working with community members and looking at the desired programs that they'd like to provide, we've calculated that actually 70% of the time of pool usage will be public use, and about 30% will be school use. Now I'd like to get into the cost collaborative and financing aspects, and of course, as you look at this slide, the first thing that you're going to focus on are going to be the numbers, but I'd like you to focus on something a little bit different first. First of all, if you look at the collaborators, we have the city, the school, and the community who have all made financial commitments to this facility, and this is unique throughout Iowa. Recently, as Tracy pointed out, we've had pools that have gone up in other communities, but none of these facilities have been jointly financed. They've all either been only a school facility, or only a city pool, of which there are very few, or only a private pool, and by having this unique collaboration, we believe that this facility is going to be a bigger and better facility than any one entity could build by itself, and we're very proud of this aspect. We are looking at a $21 million total cost to the facility, and while this sounds jaw-dropping, I can tell you that it is in line with other facilities that are being built around the country and within the state. We have had a substantial increase in estimated costs since we first started walking, working on this project two years ago, and those costs, the cost increases, are directly related to building material and construction cost increases that have been incurred as a result of the pandemic. You can see here that the school district has committed $8 million to the project. Our city commitment is currently $5.1 million, and we are asking the city to put in another $2.9 million to make their contribution equal to that of the school district. Our group, Jump In, has been asked to raise $3.3 million from the community. We are at a little over $2.5 million right now, and we're really pleased with the support that we've received. It ranges from substantial individual contributions to little kids collecting change at swim meets. We have business contributions, and also a number of area foundations that have deemed this project worthy of their commitment, and those foundations include the Curzzy Foundation, McElroy Trust, the Shoitz Foundation, the Van G Miller Foundation, and also the Wellmark Foundation. Because of the cost increases that we are looking at, building of this project has been split into two phases. Phase one will be only the shell of the building, and that's estimated to be approximately $16.1 million. This is the area in which we're seeing the highest cost increases, by the way, because it includes all of the heating and air conditioning and filtration systems that need to be installed. Bids have been submitted. We expect a school board approval of the project in early October, and the shell of the building could be completed as early as September of 2023. Phase two would actually involve then placing the pools within the shell of the building, and we would hope that bids could be let for this in January of 2024, with completion in December of that year. However, if we are able to secure funding in advance soon enough, we'll be able to move on to this phase earlier than we state in this timeline. We would love to add you to this collaboration and make this a facility that has county support, as well as the local government, local school board, and community support, and we want you to know that your financial support would also not only help us complete our remaining funding needs, but it could allow us to access state funds, which would really make this an incredibly unique collaborative facility that will benefit truly everyone within the Blackhawk County area. And with that, we do want to move on to let you know in terms of what our specific request would be. Tracy, do you want to come up also? We've identified really a dollar amount that we think would be most helpful for the project, as well as what we think would be within the realm of possibility from ARPA funds that are available to the county, and with that, we very much appreciate being able to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
I guess, I know it's been, like you said, this has been in the works, you said, for a couple of years, as far as your fundraising and the planning and that type of thing, and I appreciate, like you say, the group's patience. I think it was January I mentioned one of your committee members had asked about being on the board's agenda to present this, and that you did want the county, if possible, to be considering this, and as the board members know, I think we thought we'd make a little more progress than we have so far, knowing where we are with our American Rescue Plan money, but that's something in the next few weeks or months or soon, that we hope to at least get some of our questions addressed and where we go from there. But now, you mentioned the support from the communities. Is that the other, the surrounding communities as well? I guess some of the contributions or funding and that type of thing, is that coming from the other communities as well, or primarily the Waterloo-Cedar Falls area?
Primarily, it's Cedar Falls-Waterloo area.
But just with assists, like you say, the others kind of being a regional pool, yet others would be allowed that access. And then you also touched on the fact that it might allow you to access some state funding if the county were to participate. Could you elaborate on that, or do you have anything in mind that you're thinking of particularly?
Yes, there are community attraction, community attraction and tourism grants available through the state, and one of the requirements is there, is there has to be some county funding, funding provided for applicants to those projects, and so that would allow us to draw down additional dollars from the state.
Okay. I wondered if it was a CAT grant, but I thought I better ask. Maybe it's something different.
Your ask is $995,000, but you'd accept any amount up into that amount?
Yes.
Certainly.
We'd appreciate any support at all.
Yes.
The reason we put that number is we saw that there were some different rules, at least we perceived there were different rules for ARPA once you exceeded that $1 million threshold, so.
Very perceptive.
Yeah.
True.
You've done a lot of, you've accomplished a lot of great already, so I hope that we can be a part of it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you for you guys and your consideration and time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. All of our contract construction projects have wrapped up for the season. We are still hauling rock on the gravel road system for a few more weeks until mid-October, and then, as alluded to by Mr. Veder, our seal coating was completed last week by Monats. I think we resurfaced approximately seven, excuse me, seal coated approximately seven miles of pavement. And then lastly, our Lincoln Road Bridge project is, should be completed in about three weeks. If you would like to see the beam set on that bridge, this is one of our county crew bridges. If you would like to come out and see the beam set, that will probably be going on, hopefully, weather permitting, next week, so if you'd like to see that, give me a call and we'll get you out there. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Gavine.
Good morning, Board. Rory Gavine, maintenance superintendent. Just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce to you our new safety coordinator for Blackhawk County, Brad Metcalf. Brad brings a great deal of experience, and I think will be a very valuable asset to the county.
Thank you, Rory.
Good morning.
Good morning.
7/24 Lynn Kaylee in Waterloo. About 30 years of experience in general construction and commercial roofing industry, so second day, getting my feet wet, getting to put names and faces, and excited to get going.
Welcome on board.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, moving on to minutes approved for September 20th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felkha.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is proclamations. This is a resolution to pledge support for Iowa's 2019 to 2023 strategic highway safety plan and the overall vision of zero fatalities on Iowa's public roadways. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, again. So I've told you in the past that in order for agencies, counties, and cities in particular, to receive funding from the Build Back Better Federal Bill, or the IIJA bill, whichever you prefer to call it, we, there is a funding category called Safe Streets for All. As part of receiving money through that grant, agencies need to have a local road safety plan in place. We had a local road safety plan completed for us by the Iowa DOT in 2019. One of the missing elements of that plan was there needed to be a formal commitment by a person and authority, namely the chairman of the Board of Supervisors for a county. We did not have that in our plan, so that is what we're asking for today, is to have this commitment by the chair that you support. The goals in our local road safety plan, it's not a financial commitment. We will, of course, be adopting some of those. We have been adopting some of those projects in our plan already, such as rumble strips on our shoulder, shoulder rumble strips, six-inch pavement markings. Those are the types of things that are in the local road safety plan, so I would recommend that you do approve this proclamation.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felkha.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution to agreement between Blackhawk County and Navitas Health Solutions for compliance services related to prescription drug reporting requirements under the Consolidated Appropriations Act. Will the annual fee of $2,500 be approved? Director Chair is signing for same.
Second.
Moved in second.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Amanda Fessam, Mary-Hemmy Resources Director. So pretty straightforward here. We just have new federal regulations when it comes to the transparency of prescription drug costs, as well as healthcare spending, so this is a pretty minimal fee in order for Navitas to perform those compliance requirements, and it'll come out of the fee structure that we already have in for the self-insurance, for the self-funded insurance plan that we have. So, any questions at all on this? All right, thank you.
Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felkha.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution for the cooperative agreement between Blackhawk County and City of Elk Run Heights for improvements to the guardrail at Elk Run Road Bridge over Elk Run Creek within Blackhawk County. Be approved, and Director Chair is signing for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathy?
Yeah, as part of our FY '23 budget, we had budgeted to do a small guardrail project update. This would be four locations in Blackhawk County. One of the projects, or locations, excuse me, is the bridge on Elk Run Road, just north of Dubuque Road. We share that 50/50. It's split down the county line. The city line is straight down the middle of the bridge. We share that with the City of Elk Run. We are asking them to participate in the cost at a 50% share of the guardrail replacement at that location. Our latest estimate was about $53,000 or $52,000 at that location, so they would be more, they would agree to pay 50% of the share. Can I answer any questions?
I think you mentioned too that Mike had reviewed the agreement, so we were going to say?
Yes. It was a review earlier this year.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Felkha.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is other business. This is a resolution, Director County Auditor for Advertise for Public Carrying Bid Opening to be held at 9:05 a.m. on October 18, 2022, in this boardroom at the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East Fifth Street, on the proposed fiscal year '23 reventment project in various locations throughout Blackhawk County.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I had a question, I guess, on what the project was. Is there anyone that can speak to that?
There she is again.
Thank you.
So we've taken a look, based on inspections last year, bridge inspections last year, we identified a few locations that are, that do need reventment placed near the abutments, so that they are protected from scour, from future high-water events. So this is, we put together a small reventment project placing riprap rock around the abutments, and I believe one of the locations has a pier that's in the water that needs to have riprap placed around it, so this would allow a contractor to do this work. We are anticipating the work to be completed sometime before the end of the fiscal year '23, so June 30th of 2023, the work would be complete.
Thank you, Kathy.
We don't do this very often.
We are able to do some of this work ourselves. It just depends on our schedule and how difficult it is to get into the, to get to the, placing the rock. We've decided we would like a contractor to do this work.
Thank you.
This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felkha.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, this is a motion to receive and place on file the Blackhawk County Extension Reconciliation Statement affidavits. and Public Report Agricultural Extension Educational Operating Fund, July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is discussion for the IO Code as it relates to the utilization of sixty percent of the monies collected from inmates for room and board.
Mike, you began researching this several months ago, it sounds like.
Yeah, a number of months ago, I believe it was in April. I was asked by the then-county Finance Director just to look into what, there's a sixty-forty split under section three fifty-six point seven, and the sixty percent portion of that is restricted generally for jail and security functions. And they lay out four areas in the code section that that, that that portion can be used for. The other forty percent, so far as I can tell, both from looking at the statute and my understanding as to others' inquiry of other counties is, is generally treated as unrestricted.
And you talked to the attorney, an attorney from ISAC?
I did, yes.
And you're working, you communicated with Finance Director Perry?
Correct.
And you were made aware of some communication with Finance Director Susan Deaton?
I had, so with regard to ISAC, at the time, I myself sent an inquiry to their attorney. She responded that she had spoken to a couple of counties and they both, the, the forty percent was placed in the, in the County General Fund. I don't know what counties those were. My understanding from speaking with Mr. Perry was that he himself spoke with, I believe, a couple of counties and, and got the same answer. Again, I don't know what counties those were. With regard to the former, former Finance Director Susan Deaton, I had heard from someone, I, I don't believe it was Mr. Perry. I don't recall who it was, it may have been you Supervisor Treoka. But I had heard from someone that she had raised this issue to the Board back when she was Finance Director. That is, that's the extent that I'm aware of her involvement with this issue.
And you ultimately rendered a decision for the Board in regard to IO Code, chapter three fifty-six point seven?
I, I gave an opinion that the, according to the code, there's nothing that restricts how the Board spends that forty percent.
But that, we have complete and total control over the, of the expenditures in regard to that forty percent?
Correct. Under three fifty-six point seven, the, the Board has control over that forty percent.
Now, the sixty percent, the restricted funds, there are four specific areas, as a matter of fact, the code says, where the money shall be utilized.
Yeah, those, those areas are courthouse, security equipment, law enforcement personnel, number one. Number two, infrastructure improvements of a jail, including newer remodeling costs. Number three, infrastructure improvements of juvenile detention facilities, including newer remodeling costs. And number four, medical and prescription drug costs of inmates in jail. And the way that that is set up under the code is that the, the sheriff and presumably the sheriff's, the Sheriff's Office would have, is allowed input as to those, but ultimately those decisions are made by the Board.
And the code also mentions, mentions a plan and a twenty-eight E agreement.
It does. It says with specific regard to the plan, it says the sheriff may submit a plan or recommendations to the Board of Supervisors for the use of the funds with specific reference to a twenty-eight E agreement. It states, and I'm gonna quote here, "Subject to the requirements of this subsection, funds may be used in the manner set forth in an agreement entered into under chapter twenty-eight E." So it doesn't require a twenty-eight E agreement, it gives that as one possible option as to how you use those funds.
Gotcha. Now, item number one on what shall be used for courthouse, security equipment and law enforcement personnel cost. And I think a couple of other Board members had this question as well. When they say law enforcement personnel, do they mean sworn personnel or any personnel within a law enforcement agency? Cause I'm not clear on that.
I don't see a restriction as to what type of law enforcement personnel they mean. I haven't dug into that definition further, however, to see if there's any case law or other guidance indicating what it means when it says law enforcement, it says security equipment and law enforcement personnel costs. Just based on the plain language of the statute, I would say it would include all of the above.
Questions?
Well, I think what caused some of us to look at least at this particular category was the discussion that we've had in the last couple of weeks about the NAF care costs and the increase in insurance and where could we be looking to, I guess, utilize funding or where would we find funding? And this was just a question that came up, I think, as possibility of that forty percent fund.
I think, you know, we became educated on this law. I think we were unaware on the full extent of the law, so that's why we relied on Mike. And it sounds like this actually started long ago, these discussions. And in regard to the medical care, we can charge for room and board, but it also looks like by the code, we can charge for medical care we give to an inmate as well.
That's correct. Let me, let me see, I believe it's under this same statute, which I have in front of me. But the, my recollection without specific, without locating the specific language is that the, the medical care of an inmate is to be paid by an inmate who is an adult and who has the ability to pay, but that the, the jail cannot deny care to an inmate based on inability to pay.
Right, right, yeah, as we should.
If I can weigh in on that real quick. Nate Neff, Jail Administrator with Sheriff's Office. That is correct under chapter three fifty-seven, however, chapter fifty kind of goes against that. And it says we can only charge medical care to inmates who have been sentenced. So that's what we've been abiding by, just to not get ourselves in any hot water with that. And most of the jails in the state have done the same thing. We used to charge for a minimal fee, like a two-dollar fee for prescriptions and a four-dollar fee to see our doctor. We don't do that anymore based on chapter fifty. If anything, we could fall back to just charging those inmates who are sentenced, but that's a very small percentage of who we have over there, so. Just to clear you up on that.
Good, thank you.
Any questions?
Well, and so we really don't have specific counties that we are doing what other counties do or that they're all done differently or uniquely to them.
My understanding from the conversations I had, and understand that, that this was a number of months ago, some of these, these conversations took place verbally. But my understanding was that, at least thus far, we didn't find any other county that treated the forty percent as restricted, as restricted even to the jail or to the Sheriff's Office necessarily, or, or to anything else for that matter. My understanding from those same conversations is that that's what we have, in Blackhawk County, have done with that forty percent. So that's the, that's the extent to which I dug into that. I myself have not contacted other counties, I've not been asked to contact other counties.
So you, so you're saying you have, in your conversations correspondence, you haven't found another county that operates as we do in regard to this?
No. My understanding from the limited communication I had with ISAC's General Counsel was that she had contacted a couple of other counties. Neither of them did it the way we did it. My understanding from talking with our former Finance Director is that he had done the same thing and neither of the two or perhaps three counties that he had been in contact with did it the way Blackhawk County did it.
Any further questions at this time?
Well, I guess, oh, I don't know. I was gonna say, was there gonna be some more presentation? Or I was gonna say, I know the sheriff's here, I don't know if that was part of our discussion or we wanted to.
It's, yeah, it's up to the Chair, up to the Board.
Good morning.
Morning.
Approximately eighty percent of the sheriffs of the state function in the way that we function. It's interesting that this has been looked at since April, but the Sheriff's Office hasn't been engaged in this conversation at all. But we certainly invite that conversation because it gives us the opportunity to take a look at something that's been in practice for over thirty years. And Mike is right, it doesn't take a twenty-eight E to do this, but it's certainly something that Tony Thompson didn't start. It's something that's been in, in place for well before what Tony Thompson fell in on. And the opportunities that we have been able to take advantage of, we continue to embrace. So if the Board is looking at the forty percent of room and board as a way to stand up your medical shortfall, I, I'm sorry, but that forty percent isn't gonna get you there.
It was just a consideration.
Two hundred thousand is, is unfortunately well-managed because it exceeds your sixty percent at the, at this time, but it doesn't come anywhere close to, to getting you where you need to be. The danger for us is it undoes those thirty years of practice and the.
Can you elaborate on that? The thirty years of practice, what's, what's been going on?
Oh, so, so my predecessor bought things that are needed to further the, the governance of his agency outside of the taxpayer dollar. He bought SWAT weapons, tactical equipment, executive chairs. He bought carpeting. He paid for tuck pointing for the jail out of that. He was able to, to do things that just simply weren't something that he wanted to put on the burden of the taxpayer. And that account has continued to grow. I built it when I took office because I started picking at it, trying to figure out why we were doing confessions of judgment for X number of dollars, but only collecting thirty percent of it. And started exercising that muscle a little bit and started growing that account. And so that account grew to, to large figures. The, the highest dollar amount being just over, oh, let's see. I'm looking at yearly totals here. Four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand? No, about four hundred and, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand was our high year back in two thousand and twelve. So a few years after I took office, when I finally kind of started picking at that and, and growing that account in one year, we were averaging about thirty-five thousand dollars a month at our high watermark. Now we're back down to about twenty-seven thousand dollars a month in collections on, on that account. Clearly, as Mike indicated, this falls under your purview and that agreement, thirty-plus years in the making, totally your, your ability to do what you want to do with it. I find it interesting that when Supervisor Treoka was running for sheriff, he reveled in the opportunity to have autonomy as the sheriff to, to make some of these decisions outside of budget, as a police chief doesn't have that opportunity. And now he's considering removing it from the sheriff, but that's just interest and, and academic on my part. But those things that, that we've had the opportunity to use for staff engagement, officer wellness, leadership enhancement, performance enhancement types of training, as well as furtherance of our agency from an administrative perspective, investments in, we, we have appreciation for. And, you know, if, if the Board deems it necessary to take that two hundred thousand to apply it to, to something else that's certainly within your purview, we just appreciate having that opportunity to be able to use that money discretionarily as we have in the past thirty years. So if you have questions regarding some of those expenditures, which it sounds like you do, I stand ready to answer that. That's actually where I revel, is the opportunity to expand on some of your questions because I've understood that there have been considerable questions, both brought to the public as well as outside of our purview, which, again, thank you for inviting us.
When we extended the invitation on Thursday, and I do have questions. I mean, it's clear these money come from the inmates, a, to stay in the jail. It's a good law. It's a fair law. When I did go through the spreadsheet, I saw expenditures that made me uncomfortable. Sure. Like bouncy houses, cotton candy machines, ice cream machines, laser tag. Not, and, and not just once, but over several years.
Every year. You know what those expenditures are for, Dan?
I can only speculate, but.
So the county just held last weekend a specific day for their employees, right?
Yes.
We've been doing that since two thousand and ten. But we use that day not just for a rest and relaxation day, we use that day for a training day. But not a training day for our employees. We use that training day for our staff's family. We bring our families out, we train them how to render weapons safe, how to qualify, how to, actually, if they want to qualify for a non-professional permit to carry. Because we know we're introducing weapons into their household, we give those family members an opportunity to become more familiar with SWAT, with K-9, with Water Patrol, with the dive team, with all of those special teams. They get an opportunity to come and tour the jail. But while mom and adult child is out on the range, we do something with the children as well. We, the laser tag and the gaming trailer and things like that, we're, we're sponsored by Hicks Plays, Jennifer Stevenson, who's also a weapons instructor. So we took that training down to the childhood level as well and taught weapons safety and, and those kinds of things with them. But we also tried to keep them busy. The, the young kids, we would bring in, and we have cotton candy, we had those kinds of things for those kids as well. So it was a, a day of rest and relaxation, but it was also a day of training. It was a way to, now a third of our staff obviously had to work because we have three shifts and, and three squads per shift. So a third of our staff was working, but the other two-thirds had the opportunity to come out and take advantage of those training opportunities for family. And over the years, that's how we've utilized those materials to better influence and better impact our families who support our staff while they are engaging in the work that we do, which we consider critical. And so whether it's taking a, a deep and in-depth tour of our facilities down here so that they can demystify the work that they do when they're locked into a pod with fifty inmates, or, again, introducing a weapon into their home and knowing how to take care of that weapon, how to render it safe, how to access it if they need to, God forbid, because they become more of a target as a law enforcement officer, or becoming more familiar and intimately aware of what it is to be a member of the SWAT team or the dive team or the water safety patrol or, or those kinds of things. Or just being able to pet and hang on the ears of our canine dog. All of those things we make available to our staff and their family on that day so that we can help bring that sense of family further into all that they do. So that's what those are for, those seem to be reasonable expenses. But expenses we didn't want to take out of the tax budget, the tax askings for that. And it seemed reasonable to be able to pull that out of another fund that wasn't a tax asking while doing it.
We had our county employee appreciation picnic and we had a bake sale to generate revenue. We also donated money to it. I think about the families too, the families of the inmates. Because when they have to pay this obligation, and I've talked to these inmates, it's mom, it's dad, it's the wife.
Well, that's how you paid for food, and, and we don't pay for food that way, so. Food, food at our, at our family days are paid a different way as well.
So it just made me uneasy that way. Also, we keep hearing every budget cycle that we're not using tax dollars to pay some of these expenses. However, the law clearly states that we can, the forty percent goes toward the general fund where we can utilize it for tax relief. They're public dollars.
That's your opportunity to do if that's what you want to do.
They're all public dollars.
For thirty years, we've done it a different way, so.
And we have a past practice, and I've talked to Supervisor Leyland about past practices. I've talked to our attorney about past practices. If we have a past practice that we want to change, we simply put it in writing. The past practice that I want to change, that I put in writing with the help of our attorney is the next proposal we're going to consider. I just want us to follow the law.
I want to make sure, I want to make sure that you're all aware, because again, I've indicated to you several times about supervisors being out of their depth in certain things, and I want to make sure that you all are aware of what you're asking for. For example, you understand confession of judgments, yes?
Mm-hmm.
You understand how this money gets where it goes. You understand the process. So I want to clarify and make sure that you want all the money. You want the records keeping, you want the research, you want the collections, you want to keep those funds, correct?
Forty percent.
Because we're here to help you. If you are looking to transition, our staff is a hundred percent willing to assist you in that process of transition. But we want to make sure that we understand what you're asking for. And then to make sure that you are aware of the potential pitfalls and the unforeseen consequences of what it is that you're asking for.
We're taking this one step at a time, and we're getting ready to enter our budget discussions. We're hiring a finance director. This is a perfect step to initiate. There's going to be many more conversations and there's going to be much more dialogue we're going to have. This is just the first step in that process.
That didn't really answer the question, but I want to make sure that we're all going into this eyes wide open because I know our staff certainly is. There's a hundred and thirty years of jailing experience sitting in the room right now that have not been engaged up to this point. So if the board is comfortable in making what your next action item is, I just want to make sure that you're fully aware of what it is that you're asking for us to do. And as long as you are, and that is what you're asking for, then we wish you well.
We're simply reaffirming that we're going to follow the law with this resolution.
Well, and that's part of my concern, obviously, is understanding fully what this does for us as a county or for our departments. Not that I don't think there's things that we can't improve, or like even communication or the plan or having some of these...
And we don't want to step in the way of process or progress. That's not our intention at all. We certainly recognize that as well. And again, this certainly falls under the board's purview, so if...
Yeah. No, I was thinking, just even as a difference of opinion, I'm hearing that you're telling us eighty percent of the counties in Iowa do the same thing we're doing. And that's not the way it was shared.
Most all of the, well, he said two sheriffs they talked to or two counties they talked to.
Yeah.
I talked to every sheriff. Every single one of us have served on the state sheriff's legislative and jails committee. So this is not new business to us. But again, we weren't consulted or engaged, so...
Nor were some of us either, like I said. When these conversations happen in April, I'm not sure what prompted some of those, but we...
But that's all right. I mean, this is your, this is your stuff to do what you do.
This is, that's why I really want to have a good understanding of what it does for us, what it does for you.
Work sessions between April and now probably would have been more appropriate, but it's on your agenda, so do what you will. We will, we'll stand ready to respond and support whatever decision the board makes.
Sure. I would like, if somebody can tell me what does this do for us though, and I know sure anybody can here. Where are we to support this today? What changes do we want to make?
I'm a little concerned that there's been this undertone of some sort of mismanagement of that forty percent. When you look at the fact that we draw less funds than the sixty percent that the board does, yet there's more money in the forty percent. So somehow the forty percent is needed to stand up the entire account. I want to make sure that we're not, you know, being seen differently on this. You know, currently, there's fifty-five percent of that fund sitting in the forty percent allocated currently, as it stands, to the sheriff's office for discretionary funding and expenditure. So we get it, and we don't have any qualms whatsoever. If you transition that money, it is what it is. We just know that we have appreciated the ability to build a training range. We have appreciated the fact that over the last fifteen years, we've had four lawsuits because of the quality of the training that we've been able to provide and the support that that range and other things that we're able to do with those monies have allowed for. You know, all of that is a force multiplier for us. But at the end of the day, this is your call to make. And again, we caution you that the unintended consequences of those things that you don't know could very likely come back to bite you.
Well, it raises another question. So you're telling us eighty percent of sheriffs aren't following Iowa Code three fifty-seven point seven, three fifty-six point seven?
Every one of them follow the code because there's a special agreement that doesn't necessarily require a twenty-eight E that allows those money to be spent however the board deems. And that's what we've been doing for the last thirty years. That's well within the guidelines of three fifty-six seven.
And that's all we want. We want an articulated plan is all we ask for because since I've been on the board, can I ask?
Right now, the plan is you have sixty percent that are spent a very specific way and forty percent have been spent by the sheriff discretionarily. That has been the plan for the past thirty-plus years.
Again, I'm saying we just want to reaffirm that we're following the law.
So if you want to reaffirm that plan today, that would be fantastic.
I just want to be able to look at the taxpayers in the eye and say, that money's being spent right. And I feel bad for the taxpayers that they're, all along, that they're, they've been sponsoring this stuff. That's, I don't feel it's right, but that's just my feelings.
I guess, as a sheriff, I guess I'm thinking...
And when we have sheriff deputies come in here and explain to us things that are going on, and yet they don't, can't carry it out themselves, that's a little disturbing too, that they're in fear of their jobs, so... It's just an added step.
Say a little more about that.
Dan, I got a question.
Yes.
Is your intent then, if the board voted for that forty percent, is your intent to apply that money towards the increase of NAF Care?
No.
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 That was just a thought, I think, Tom, that kind of prompted some of the discussion we had of like when we were looking for additional funding and that came up in my mind. That was all, thank you.
So the whole intent isn't apply it towards that too, because it's going to have to, the increase is going to have to come from somewhere.
Right. Right, and that's a discussion and decision for the board to have down the road.
Are there things, I guess, Tony, that you feel we could do differently or better? I mean, I'm wondering, you know, some of the things I was questioning was, when you've made the decisions on the forty percent, could the communication with the board, or I mean, maybe you prefer not having the board involved at all in that discretionary spending, or would it have been beneficial as a partnership, I guess, for us to have been more transparent with the public or whatever, you know, in those areas to say, hey, this is what we're doing, whether it's the bouncing houses?
So we consider our activities extremely transparent. Every week, we send invoices in to the auditor, right? Every week, those invoices come to the board. Every week, you approve our expenditures. Every year, those expenditures are reviewed by an independent auditing firm. We are extremely transparent. There's no gotchas on anything that we do on our expenditures. I'll stand flat-footed and answer any question about any expenditure we have because it's actually laughable that some of these things have come to light. In fact, I like the opportunity to speak to them because it gives me the opportunity to talk about administrative management philosophy and morale management and officer wellness issues. You know, I could get into tons of anecdotal stories and analogies as to the things that Chief Deputy Herbst and I have attended with Twenty-First Century Policing Policy Strategies and traveling on a paid junket to Miami, Florida to speak at the IACP Conference on Officer Wellness and Health Symposiums and, you know, those things that we bring back to Black Hawk County to improve the quality of the health and morale and welfare of our staff. But the bottom line is, certainly, there's ways that we could better partner, we could better be transparent. I mean, if you want me to highlight invoices on things that we think you might look at as concerning or you simply want, as it illustrates in the, in the code, of a mutually agreed or a plan or, I mean, there's all kinds of different ways to approach that, certainly.
Well, I guess I'm thinking like when we have budgeting sessions and whether it's the sixty, forty, or however that's approached, when you have a plan for that, I mean, I know it seems like it is a lot of...
I think we get very, we as elected officials get very cautious. You're no different than I am. You're an elected official just like I am. So once you've approved my budget, I'm going to spend that budget the way I think it's necessary to approve the processes and the procedures that my agency needs to better affect the function of our agency. So at that point, I think the board's role stops. If the board wants to question purchases, and again, I've explained to people, if I want to spend seventeen million dollars on pencils, I could. I wouldn't get reelected for doing that. But that's kind of the way that works. I think it's mismanagement of funds. So we're frugal, we're cautious, we are, we're diplomatic in how we approach what we do. There's nothing that Tony Thompson does with this budget. This is a command staff and administrative staff approach that we're very much on top of. In fact, I challenge any other agency or organization in the county that sits there every Monday morning in their staff meeting and looks at budget. My staff is very in touch and in tune with their budget, and we manage it very actively. So we all take offense to any concerns that we are not being frugal and pragmatic when we approach budgetary decisions. And it's important for us because we are, you know, one of the larger, if not the largest, albeit we don't buy road graders and build bridges and things like that. But we know where we are on the slice of the pie. So we are, we take that role diligently and important, so...
Well, and I know you came up to us probably three years ago at least regarding the purchase of the property out of the range to create the buffer. In that sense, you know, it was something you brought to us, and I knew it was going to be from the forty percent. And maybe, maybe I'm being, not doing the job I should. When you talk about itemized lists being presented, we do, but I just thought sometimes the communication helps when there's dialogue between how things...
Yeah, there's certainly opportunities there. If the board wants to approach this differently, there's certainly opportunities there to improve that.
Well, I think now that we're aware of how this law works, we've created liability for ourselves because there are parameters that are clearly established for the sixty percent, and it's incumbent upon the board to just ensure those parameters are being followed.
And this does allow the sheriff's department to still just come before the board and ask for the same expenses that they have always?
Yes. Like one example is, I mean, there's the position that Sarah Carter holds, that's very important. I think the board fully supports that. But we've been remiss in our duties, but now we've educated ourselves, and we simply follow the law.
Any other questions or concerns at this time?
Any thoughts? I'm open to hearing them.
Yeah, no, I just, I'm not comfortable with the implication that we haven't been following the law. And so that makes me a little bit uneasy about this, about supporting this resolution because I think that Sheriff Thompson has accurately laid out what they've been doing, what the agreement for thirty years has been, so I think the implication that we're not following the law is a little bit of a slippery slope.
Did you want, yes, I was going to say attorney.
I always try and stay in my lane, but I, and certainly I don't, I don't have an opinion in terms of whether this should or shouldn't pass. I just want to make sure that everybody understands the implications of a change in terms of who collects the fees from inmates who don't pay them. Currently, there's a process that's followed. And the reason I'm thinking of this now is because when Sheriff Thompson was talking a little bit ago, he talked about a transfer of the process of collecting these fees. Currently, there's a process that's followed. Three fifty-six point seven talks about the sheriff or municipality collecting these fees, sheriff in a county circumstance. There's staff that he has that are dedicated to this collection. I also work on this because the county attorney's office is also responsible for playing a role in that. I think that it behooves everyone involved to know how that process is going to go forward because it's not a process that I can undertake on my own. I'm not, the law does not read a hundred percent clearly that the sheriff has to provide staff to play a role in that process. It's certainly something that the county attorney may want input on as well. So there is, you know, my only thought is that I've never given an opinion that the law hasn't been followed in the past. I do believe that everybody, certainly Supervisor Trelka, has taken this concern to the board in good faith. But at the same time, before any change is made, perhaps everyone wants to kind of have some more time to dig in. I believe the first time I became aware of this was on, granted, it was back in April when the finance director took it to me, and I don't know why he took it to me at that time. I had assumed he had a conversation with one or more supervisors. But having said that, the, since then, the first time that it had been brought to my attention was, I believe, on Thursday of last week. So that, that's my only thought going forward is that if people have questions, maybe we dig into those questions before we try and, you know, take the action first. That's just my, and again, this, I don't mean to get out of my lane here.
No, I appreciate your comments because like I said, that, my concern is, I mean, first off, I looked at this and did think too, like, okay, so we take the action and find out, whoops, that's not quite what we wanted, we could reverse it. And not necessarily the route, I guess, I think is probably the best to take, is just like, oh, well, if we got into something that I need to change it back, we'll just change it and maybe not take a little more time to make certain, I guess, some of the things that we're saying that benefit us or are to the better of the relationship, the working relationship, the funding. I don't know that, that's just my opinion. I'd like a little more comfort level, but that's just me.
I think I got a question.
Go ahead.
Does the, is the sheriff saying, I'm not sure, I'm kind of under the conclusion that the county attorney was doing all the collection. Is the sheriff saying he has a staff, a paid staff that's actually collecting room and board? I was under the impression it was the county attorney's office that was doing all that.
I can speak to that, Supervisor Little. So it's a cooperative effort. When an inmate is discharged from the jail, that inmate typically signs a confession of judgment for any amounts outstanding that that inmate owes. In the event that a, that the inmate does not pay those amounts, whether pursuant to an agreement entered informally with the sheriff's office or just in whole, you know, as a whole, if the inmate has the money to pay that, then they typically file a confession of judgment with court. That process is generally handled by staff of the sheriff's office. It isn't until a court appearance is needed or something becomes disputed that I become involved. Now, the county attorney's office periodically, the county attorney's office has its own collections people. They have assisted in this process in part because they have valuable experience in doing that to share with, with collections people in the sheriff's office. But my work in terms of collecting inmate amounts, my work is generally done with sheriff's department's staff.
My question was, does the sheriff have a paid staff doing the collections for room and board? Yes or no?
My answer would be yes, but I think the sheriff's department would agree with me on that.
Well, I'm asking the sheriff.
Hey, Tom, Nate Naff here. I do have one of my staff members that works on this. It's not her sole job. She works on it as she has time, and as she gets her other duties done, she works on this too, so she goes back and forth. this, too, so she goes back and forth. So it's not her sole purpose for being there.
Is that where the majority of the money's coming from, from that individual? Or is the collection from the county attorney's office? I always thought it was all one pie down there.
No, this comes from, this comes from Mary over in our office.
So they, county attorney don't collect anything for room and board?
I think they work more on their own fines than their own collections down there, if I'm not mistaken.
There is a county attorney fine collection division downstairs. I don't, I'm not involved with that division generally. Periodically, I get asked a question for research for them, but my involvement in terms of collecting for the sheriff, I am involved in that, Mr. Little, and my involvement, my interaction is primarily with staff of the sheriff's office. And one in particular, it's Mary who Mr. Neff just referenced.
Yeah, Mike, I, actually, I was on the board when that was created by Tom Ferguson, that collection downstairs. It didn't exist until Tom Ferguson started it a few years ago when he was here. And then it was going to go outsourced, and they found out it would have cost more to go outsourced, so they kept it in-house. But that was created under Tom Ferguson. I guess I wasn't aware the sheriff's office was doing any collection. I thought it was all downstairs.
And I think part of the explanation for that, Mr. Little, is that a few years ago, there was a change in law that where no longer did inmate room and board get taxed as, as an item restitution, but rather, the sheriff's office had to take that action separately as a, as a separate civil action. And because of that, the sheriff's office adapted, as did the county attorney's office, and this is the way that we collectively adapted to it.
That's correct. When the law changed, the county attorney got out of collecting for room and board. So it left it to our staff to have to collect. That's why you saw the dramatic decrease, because we don't have a full-time staff collector.
Well, Tony-
Yeah.
Are you, are you saying, then, I think, in a roundabout way, you're trying to tell the board that if this pass, this resolution passes, the sheriff's office will not be collecting any more room and board?
I won't prioritize it.
So it just, whatever gets collected, or it don't get collected?
Yeah, you're still going to get, you're still going to get some collections from courts. We get a certain percentage from the courts every month. You're still going to get a percentage, there was a law change where fines, you know, we used to have a $5 surcharge, now there's a 9% fee attached to all fines collected. That goes into the same account, because the language for that fine collection, I had Grant put that into the same account. So you're going to have that percentage, which is about, what, $7,000 a month, something like that, that will come in there. But again, Nate indicated Mary has a full-time jail clerk job on top of collections, so she will reprioritize her time to that full-time jail clerk job, and then secondarily, to fine collection.
But if the county, what I mean by the county, the board of supervisors were to redirect those funds, that 40%, let's just say, towards the increase on NAVA Care, NAF Care, that would help reduce the tax dollars that we're going to have to start paying this year, when we approve it or if we approve it, and into the future. So would it be an advantage to the sheriff to collect as much as I can to help so it reduces the tax asking, will we have to pay this 27% increase or whatever it turns out to be? I guess I-
On one hand, it would be to our advantage; on the other hand, it would be to our disadvantage, because it would detract from our training capabilities and the expansion of that range training facility, and some of those other ancillary things that we're able to take care of now, that we're no longer able to take care of. So it's a bit of a double-edged sword for us.
Yeah, I think it's been spent wisely on the training and so forth, and I think it was beneficial. The only thing that concerns me now is time has changed, and during my time on the board, I've never seen such a huge increase in healthcare.
Right.
And a few years ago, we really increased it when we went 24/7.
Right.
And at 27% or 30%, that is a lot of money, but it's not a one-time deal. It's every year, it compounds even more.
Well, we're still working with them. We had a conversation even as late as yesterday, that we're still working both with them and with food service to try and get those costs down yet. We're not any kind of finalized. And Tom, I'm glad I'm talking with you right now, because I'm the one that looked you in the eye and said that that training range would never be using tax-
Tax dollars.
Right. This obviously would blow that plan out of the water, because the only way that that range was funded was through that 40%.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, things are getting more expensive, and I guess we've got to kind of look at different ways of doing business, but you agree with what Mike was saying, that the county attorney handles none of the collections of the jail?
Except for what Mike has indicated, when we have a case that needs to go to court, or we have a garnishment that needs further consideration or something, Mike does assist Mary with that.
But roughly, you're telling me out of the 300, let's just say 300,000 in one year. It's been up, it's been down. Let's just say 300,000. We could safely say 90% of that was collected by the sheriff's office?
Correct. That's, again, why I wanted to make sure that the board was fully aware of how this works.
It seems simple enough that we can figure out how much time Mary commits to these efforts, and if the sheriff's office is unwilling to do them, we take that portion, and we utilize money from the 40% to find another position within our county to engage in these duties, either in the auditor's office, the county attorney's office. The solution is simple.
I will say one thing, when that was created downstairs with the county attorney, with Tom Ferguson, he started out with one person, increased it to two, three. The condition, all along with the board, was as long as the positions were funded by the collections, the positions would stay. If the money dropped off, the positions would drop off. So he has been, and I'm assuming it's still going on, he is paying their salaries out of the collection downstairs. So you talked about then, you'd pay the collections out of that 40%, is what I think you're saying?
Yes.
Hire a full-time person?
Yep.
Strictly for the jail.
It's easy to break those costs out.
And I don't know how many they got downstairs now. They were up to four. I don't know if they're still there or not. Collections?
I think it's roughly around that number. Tom, I can't, I can't tell you for sure how many are down there. It seems like it's about three to five, however.
Yeah.
And they have the collections for fines.
I think what we need, I think what we need to reaffirm as the board is make sure that's still being paid for out of collections and not tax dollars.
And that's one other problem we have with our budget. I mean, our budget is so vast and complicated, we get lost in the minutia. And we've got several departments to always be concerned about.
Is the sheriff's department the only one that, like I say, we have fees that are collected in conservation, other departments, roads and bridges? Is the sheriff's department the only one that there's an amount, like in this case, the 40%, that doesn't come before the board?
Well, this is Iowa Code that dictates this, Linda.
But just this 40%, but I meant the others that we have, all the departments come before us?
Our full-time bill of wait permit is all in our budget?
Yes.
And so then, any expenses, yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, right now?
Negative impact to us, I guess, is why, but I don't know.
Any reports or information from the board? Area nine, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
If we have a resolution on there for action on this-
We do, yes. Yes.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
The table must have the motion to approve.
That's true.
That's right.
That's true.
So, so we had the discussion, but if there wasn't the motion in second, do we move on to the resolution?
Well, we didn't even go to the resolution.
My understanding was that the, we had the 10(c)(d) discussion, we haven't had the 10(c)(d) resolution.
Kind of.
I'm going to make a motion that pursuant to Iowa Code Section 356.7, jail administration, room and board proceeds shall be allocated as follows. 60% of jail administration room and board proceeds shall be restricted and tracked for expenses enumerated under Iowa Code Section 356.7 Paragraph 5. 40% of jail administration room and board proceeds shall be unrestricted in the county general fund, and use of such restricted proceeds shall be determined by the Board of Supervisors. And accumulated unspent proceeds not allocated for expenses enumerated under Iowa Code 356.7 Paragraph 5 shall be maintained as restricted in the county general fund, and use of such unrestricted accumulated proceeds shall be determined by the Board of Supervisors.
Do I have a second?
Right.
I'll second for further discussion, I guess. So, further discussion. Area nine, resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
No.
Little?
I'm going to, I'm going to explain my vote. I'm going to vote no on it, because I feel that it should be coming back the following week with different language, other than what's on there, plus it needs to include maybe possibly where that 60% is going to be spent, whether it be hiring a fine collection or going towards medical services to reduce the tax asking. So if it fails with me voting no on it, that gives me the option to bring it back next week.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Schwartz, no. Jelka?
Yes.
White?
No.
Dan, I would ask that you maybe see if you can revise that resolution a little bit, maybe add some different language in there, and send it to the rest of the board, and then I'd like to see this back on next Tuesday.
Or the week after.
Yeah, we've got some more to do.
Yeah, you might need more time than that. Thanks, Tom.
Especially without a fine structure.
If any supervisor has input, they can relay it to him on what they'd like to see in that resolution.
Right. We are adjourned.